But this one's different than the other one.
Hello folks, would you take me in fudging wings to the fireplace? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice as well. Okay, good evening folks. You are sitting in on the April 26 meeting of the Town of Canada double planning board. Thank you for joining us. Let me introduce the folks up front here. Right far right over in the corner there is Kim Burker. She's the remote access facilitator. And then moving to her right is John Robitella, who is our recording secretary. Scott Neal, planning board member, Amanda Van Lake, a planning board member, of course, planning board member. I'm Chuck Euler, chairman of the planning board. I have Shawna Boncheck, our town planner, and Lance Braybend, representing our town engineers MRB group. And we have Chris Nadler, our attorney, joining us remotely. So we got a full house. We were hoping our other board member who is out of town would be joining us, but I don't think he was able to connect. He's not only out of town, he's out of the country. So that probably makes it a problem as far as him joining us. So Mark Tobert will probably not be joining us this evening. Okay. We proceed fairly simply here. We, we take the agenda as it's published. If you can get agenda, they're behind me here. And we move down the agenda, taking care of the reviews of subdivisions and site plans, which we have this evening, a couple of public hearings also. During any one application, if you would like to, if you're called upon to speak as an applicant, please go to the podium, give us your name and address. Give us your presentation as to what you would like the board to consider. I will then open it up to the planning board for questions and comments. I will then go out to the public and ask for any comments the public may have. And then I'll return to the board and we'll deliberate as to our findings and hopefully make some sort of decision this evening. That pretty well covered. If you're on Zoom, if you want to get our attention, please raise your hand or somehow wave at us and when called upon, unmute yourself and, and give us your discussion item. Okay, anything and questions from the board on that? If not, I will first make sure everyone is aware of our evacuation procedures. Should an emergency arise, there's two exits you decided me here. Please know where they are should, should we have to leave the room. I will now call on anyone from the audience in live or virtually who would like to address the board on an issue that is not before, not on our agenda this evening. So if you have something that you'd like to bring to our attention, now's the time to do it, or wherever holds your peace. Okay, I don't hear it from anyone. I will announce that we do have a couple of public hearings this evening and they have been fully advertised in the Daily Messenger on April 19th. So going through the proper notification. I think, we're moving on to the agenda. Correct me if I'm wrong, isn't the first one, Benetia Group, representing Uptown Point, owners of property of the Yatviv Eastern Brickyard Road Address, requesting a single state subdivision, isn't that a continuation of a public hearing that we started? And then I think the applicant had asked that be continued. So I think that's the case. So let's, let's, let's count this as a reopening of the public hearing. CPN 22005. And we will ask that the applicant, Mr. Benetia, representing Uptown Point, tell us how things have changed since the last hearing, Rocco.
So we own that 56 acre parcel. We're gonna be doing MUO subdivision on it eventually, but right now we wanna, we've got some interest in selling off those four three acre parcels on Brickyard. The two or three people that are interested, you know, just want to use them kind of like a man cave with a barn or a building with, you know, three or four bays and maybe a little office space up front, which meets the zoning as it is right now, the industrial. So our goal is to sell off the four three acre lots. Three of them have 225 feet of frontage and one has 200 feet of frontage, leaving approximately 200 feet of frontage with 45 plus or minus acres. So that's the goal, the four three acre lots.
Okay, and
We submitted some material on, it was a, in, in NRI, they called us a silver maple swamp. And it was kind of penciled out and we submitted some material showing that there are some silver maples, but it's not even close to being predominantly. It's pretty much brush lot with maybe a little bit of timber in the back. But we did submit some material addressing that issue.
And who was that submitted?
Submitted to Shawna.
Okay. Was this something Dan Hackett had prepared? Okay, I know you had mentioned it at the last hearing and you said it would be forthcoming, but okay. I'll say it, but yeah, it is a fairly wooded lot. I guess the, the lots being subdivided off, the three acre lots and the two acre lot. They're most, yeah, they're mostly brush. If there's any silver maples, they're probably back in the residual, right?
They're way back in there and there's very little. There's not many of them at all.
We're looking at a revised plan date of 318. So that is the latest one I have, I've seen listed. So that's what you got in your, okay. Just looking through my notes from our list. Did you show the driveways? Lance, your review was, I recall, somewhat extensive. Any, any issues there?
Sure. So I think there's a couple of things to point out. One is there was some conversation with town staff and the applicant today in terms of making sure we had the correct acreage identified. Rocco's plan does show four lots at three acres. One lot, the remaining lot at 44.270 acres, which that gives a total of 56.27 acres. That is at least what is shown on the plans. That's what's under resolution that has been revised, provided back to you guys. Their EAF that was recently updated, I believe, it has a revision date of March 31st, where they went back and they made edits to the description incorrectly shows based on that map. It identifies three lots at three acres, one lot at two acres, and then remaining of 45.70, and then a total acreage of 56.254. So I don't, I think it's fairly minor, but I, one of the suggestions tonight as a condition is that EAF Part 1 be revised and re-submitted for the record that correctly identifies the lots as shown on the plan that we're talking about tonight. Now, if there's another plan that shows a different acreage, then ultimately that plan would just have to be updated to correctly identify that. The big item as it relates to this is the subdivision application, but it's commercial or industrial, excuse me. And so we have to look at this from a stormwater perspective and because it's more than one lot, each one of those lots is potentially more than one acre of disturbance. We had requested that a note be added to the plans stating that this is a project of a larger common plan development. We had informed Rocco ahead of time that he was going to have a comment similar to this in case he wanted to think about possibly doing a regional facility, which does not have to be done now, but it is something that's going to be required on the next submission of a site plan is that stormwater is going to have to be addressed for these five lots. Now, there's ways to work within that and obviously Rocco will come up with a plan when the time comes and submit it to you guys, which will come through a review. But one of the conditions that we have suggested is that a note be added clarifying that because this is a project of a larger common plan of the development, that there's going to be stormwater implications with that first lot that gets developed.
Okay, and each one of those lots where you require a site plan.
Each one of those lots would require a site plan.
So we
But in lieu of getting five individual stormwater sites, then there might be a better plan, a better approach to do something regional.
Can I, can I, can I say something?
Please.
But if you look on the plan, you'll notice that along the front of the lots, there's a 36 inch diameter stormwater main. And each one of those lots has a invert connected to the lot itself. So that the water coming off those lots, the stormwater now is going into that pipe. That pipe goes about 800 feet, 1,000 feet to the south and dumps into that big regional pond on the corner of Brickyard and Airport. I just wanted to add that, that I don't know if you can see that, but that's definitely what happened. So I think we're in a good shape to get to that pond with whatever we come up with here. And we may have to do some, you know, some separate hope, you know, you know, holding back some separate areas once we decide whoever's going to build and what they're going to build. But we do have a direct link to that pond there.
Okay.
Just wanted to point that out.
And speaking of that storm sewer, is it 30 foot easement with that storm sewer? Is that correct, Rocco?
That storm sewer, we've added a 30
You've added it.
For whatever, but I believe that storm sewer is actually on the town property, so. I don't recall, I just don't remember, but we're proposing a 30 foot easement across the frontage.
It's non-existent if you're proposing, okay, if it's not clear on the plan.
It's a proposed easement.
Okay. And I'm not sure if the size of that pipe is on the
36 inches.
Yeah, I knew, that's what you said. I don't know if that's what you showed. But okay. Board members, I'm sorry, I'm monopolizing the discussion here. Any questions? It's very straightforward. It's a subdivision in the industrial zoning. We'll get to look at the individual site plans when they come in before, before the board. The county planning board, they did not respond, right?
They did not respond.
Even though they were sent.
Yeah, this was to them publicly.
So due to their lack of response, we won't have to take any waste from them. Okay. Shawna was okay. Talked about MRB. Okay, anybody else have anything else? Everybody in the audience regarding this property on Brickyard. Okay, is the board ready to move forward?
Yes.
It's Youngstown Street.
I'm sort of making sure that it's not on the brickyard side or at this side.
Okay.
That's what we're thinking about.
So you're gonna
We're gonna confirm.
Come that way.
Yeah.
Well, the thought, Rocco, while talking to the board, the question was, is at one point, right, we had mentioned that there's a possibility, which is going back and forth, Auburn Trail coming down Brickyard Road. Now, I know that design is being done by another party and they've been working with the town and it's possible that's going to be on the other side of the road. But where you, where the frontage of these properties, it's possible it could come down this side. So one of the suggestions is, is maybe inside that, you have a 30 foot easement, you said, for stormwater along the front. Maybe we just for right now call that a town of Canada way easement. And that way we can
Yeah, that's not a problem, just as long as I can use it too, if I need to come through with a little sewer line or something.
Yeah, I think that, I think that can be worked out with the town, but I think for now we'll just identify as a 30 foot wide easement to the town of Canada. What? And then the county can utilize it for what purpose they need.
Okay, not, not a problem, not a problem, Lance.
Yes. Six. Okay, let's let that up. Any other discussions before we move ahead? Okay, let's move to seeker. It is an unlisted action. Hopefully everyone's reviewed the part one. I think all the questions were answered. There's nothing left hanging. We have a part two that Lance prepared on our behalf. Or three. So nobody has any questions with that. I'll entertain a motion to accept this as the unlisted action, your seeker. The motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Motion second for the discussions on the seeker. Not on favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, let's move on to the subdivision.
I will make that motion for subdivision plan approval for 22 dash year 05 with the six conditions. The six being Auburn Trail and the town easement language.
What about the, okay, you already got the seeker, sorry. Okay, I have a motion. Do you have a second?
I'll start.
A motion, man, that sets the skies. Clear that future involvement of the sites would be subject to site plan, but I think that's in here. Okay, a motion, a second, a little favor.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Done that one, Rocco.
Thank you.
All right. Are you doing Timberwind or, excuse me? Of course. Yeah. You're doing Timberwind or is Anthony?
I see Anthony on a computer, but I don't know if he's here or not.
Yeah, he's in himself.
Joel and I are taking care of Timberwood.
Let me, let me introduce it. I'm gonna close that one. Yeah, why? Yeah, but yeah, John usually watches it. All righty. Make sure I officially open this.
Anthony, are you doing it?
Yeah, Joel and I are here.
Okay, hang on, I'll introduce it. We're now going to open the hearing for CPN 22015, Benetia Associates, representing Timberwind LLC, owner property 6017 Dougway. Road seeking a single state subdivision for 22.295 acre lot into two lots. One of 18.644 acres, the second lot being a 3.571 acres. The hearing is now open and representing Timberwind is
Joel DeMarco.
Joel DeMarco. Good evening.
Good evening. First off, I'll defer anything technical to Anthony because he's here, representing obviously the property. Purpose of the subdivision is because there's a single family home on the first part of property. The renter wants to buy the property. And so we're trying to figure out a way to make that empty and want to retain that parcel of the property, which he doesn't want opportunity to build on it in the future, for a single family home if possible. So I'm just here for questions and the extent they can answer.
Anthony, you have anything, Dan?
The one thing that we are requesting from the planning board, as well as a subdivision approval, is the waiver for the lot frontage to to front on a private driveway. I do know the town, from talking with Chris and Shawna with the town, there is an action to rework the code to, to allow this to happen. So in the future, we wouldn't have to ask for the waiver. It would be something that we would be able to do off of a private drive instead of having to have the, the proper frontage along the, a town road. So I just wanted to add that.
Okay. Well, you already requested a waiver from the departments of burning on the public streets. And you're asking that to be allowed to, since it has frontage on a private drive, that would be in lieu of burning to a public street. I guess my question, the big thing that concerns me is what rights do you have to that right of?
So Joel is working on with, with the, with a conditional approval, Joel has reached out to the other individuals on that. He is one of the individuals that actually has the rights to one of those strips. There's those, there's that three lots that are there now that have 20 foot strips that go back. And he have, he has one of those and he has reached out to the other owners to create a formal driveway agreement, a shared driveway agreement that will incorporate the three current lots that are there and then the newly created one, that would be Timberwind.
So it serves the, the, the three parcels there serve three lots in the background. I own the middle one, but I have easement rights. That property, if you scrolled up on this map or shrunk it down, you'll see where it comes across. This is the parcel in question and this is the parcel with the lot on it. Comes across here and comes down down here. I'm not, Anthony, you'll have to clarify exactly where that, that shared road goes to, but the access to the property, I would assume the entire length of that, yeah, look, follow the entire length of this property down here and then this one. I'm down, here's where the public
So it's a 60 foot easement, is that correct?
This is the
But it's a 20 foot.
This is a secure.
There's
There's a 60 foot right of way there, Chuck, now. And it is a, there's three 20 foot trips of land, but they all have that, they all are joined on that easement.
Okay, 20 foot strip that goes up and it butts the lot one. Who owns that?
That's Yurkuzo.
Yeah.
That's, that's Nathan Yurkuzo. This one is John Yurkuzo. Yep, and this is me, Kimberly.
You're
Okay, so you've got to cross the other property to get to your 20 foot.
My own parcel.
Your end of the preference. Well, I mean, the only way I could see agreeing waiver is you prove to us that you have legal access to that private drive. And if you don't have it now, you're going to have to get it, I guess. And you said you're in the process of negotiating.
Access to this drive right now to, to access the other. Yep. I'm not sure how my legal rights are, but I, I have legal access to cover all the parts of that 60 foot easement. So
I think the concern is how would we get, what's over the first 20 foot, which you don't own, that, that's the key.
So
When I have rights.
Right, so every subdivision, this is, I think, question back to the board too. Every subdivision that gets created, we have a statement that you're required to look into is whether or not you can provide legal access to the lot. Are we creating a landlot parcel? Do they have ability to get there? We usually have a requirement that shows, give me the conceptual driveway location that has site distance. Looking at the plan, it does appear that they have a 30 foot wide strip that does connect to the, to the right of way that would allow a 10 foot wide driveway, let's for sake of arguments, be placed in there being 10 feet from the property line, which they wouldn't need a variance, 10 feet from the other property line, so they wouldn't need a variance. For as long as they can demonstrate that they got site distance that's accurate enough to put in quote unquote driveway in that location. That's what we would typically ask for any problem. Now, if there's an additional requirement, which I think is what we're asking for is everything that we've heard today is that they want to connect to this driveway. I do agree with the board's dialogue that if there is an easement, an existing agreement, that has to be shown on the plans with a filing number associated with it. But I think I just wanted to point out that as every other subdivision that comes to us, if they can demonstrate that a driveway could go here, then they would by default meet that criteria for legal access, I believe.
And this went to the ZBA as a variance for furniture. Which was interpreted, I guess the ZLB was that you needed 225 feet of furniture. There was only 30 feet and the ZBA said, I don't want to speak for them, but I got, I got, I sat on the hearing and I sensed that we don't want flag lots and this is essentially a flag lot and that's all you're doing and so they denied. So I guess now Mr. DeMarco is back to us to ask for a waiver from the subdivision, which we have the right to do to allow his access to be to that easement, the joint act.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, Chris. Sorry, I was taking off on that. And maybe I'm seeing something. I'm just looking at these zoning determinations and the plans now. I don't think the zoning, the planning board has authority to waive the zoning requirement for road frontage.
Well, we, real quick, when we were talking with Chris and Shawna, I know there is a, there's something that allows, that the town is working on, Chaney and Shawna, correct me if I'm wrong, that the town is going to allow frontage to be along a private driveway. Is that correct, Shawna? That is something in the works currently.
We, Chris and I have a proposal that we're sending to the organs committee to revamp and rework the code absolutely to define, better define or actually even define what's a private drive, what's a driveway, what's a private right of way, how many lots are allowed and that kind of thing. So because we keep encountering this issue over and over, where is the frontage on the lot? That is on a private drive.
So as part of, as part of this subdivision, what we're asking for is that waiver be, because of how the town is going to be adjusting the way that they look at private drives, private roadways and frontage and things of that nature. With that being said, part of this plan is, is creating a private driveway agreement that the four lots, the newly created lot plus the three flags that are already there that will benefit from a private driveway agreement. We didn't, Joel didn't want to go down the road and I told him not to prematurely file the agreement unless we got a conditional approval from the town in order to do that. We are, we have the, we have the, the paperwork ready. We just have to get it signed off and filed to, there is a, like, like we said, there is a 60 foot agreement, a right of way that Joel and the two other owners have across that 60 foot strip, the three 20 foot lots. There is currently an agreement there, it's, it's, it's an access easement to get back to those three lots that are off of that. This reworking of the private driveway agreement would suck in that newly created lot to be accessed off that as well. That is where we would be getting our frontage from.
Yeah, no, I understand that and I, I don't, I don't enjoy being the one to hold this up, but I don't think the planning board is, the lot frontage requirement you apply to at the ZBA is a zoning requirement, zoning standard that the planning board is not authorized to waive. There, the subdivision is to waive the procedural requirements.
It was under Chris's understanding and it was under his direction that we could get the planning board to allow us to waive the frontage on a public road to be frontaged along a private drive. That was the, that was the direction that Chris sent us down in order to get this through the town.
Ask a question? Can I ask a question, Chuck?
Go ahead, Rocco. You're still for the reservation.
So I'm a little confused of why we're even having this discussion because all over the town of Canada, we have private drives with, with these long flag lots. I mean, I can start naming them left and right all over town. So why all of a sudden doesn't this meet that requirement? I'm just a little perplexed.
I don't think that's what we're saying. We're saying that it would need it provided the appropriate easements were placed. Chris, Chris, you've Uh, Chris, Chris, you've got to tell us, Chris Nadler, you've got to tell us if we can grant this waiver or not. I mean, if we can't, um, then it's, it's a ZBA issue or we wait until the new regulations are developed. Chris?
Am I missing something here? I, I, from what I can see in the document, no, of course you, a zoning standard.
Chris, what, what I'm referring to is the determination was done by our, by our zoning officer stating that New York State law enables the planning board to waive if reasonable any requirements for approval, approval with modification or disapproval of subdivisions. Waivers are subject to conditions and may be granted in such requirements or improvements are found not to be essential to public health, safety and general welfare or inappropriate because of inadequacy or lacking in connecting facilities adjacent to or in proximity to the subdivision. So.
I agree with that statement. I just don't think that this is one of the requirement for the approval, approval of modifications or disapproval of subdivisions. I think the road frontage standard and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, but one of those things, it's a zoning standard in chapter two twenty.
Well, Chris, we're not, we're not asking that the town waived.
Anthony, excuse me, it's not a standard for subdivision approval in section one seventy four. Go ahead Anthony, sorry, I wanted.
So what, what we're not, we're not asking the town waive the frontage, we're asking that they, they consider the private drive the frontage and that gives us the proper amount.
And how is that not a zoning board issue?
I, I mean, this is the way that Chris Jensen had us go down. This is, this was his suggestion, this was the town's suggestion to, uh, to alleviate, um, the issue that we're running into.
Chris, and Chris, I think, I think the direction I was going, I, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but as long as they have legal rights to access to that easement, uh, that, uh, I would feel comfortable granting the waiver or the subdivision.
With the, they need to prevent that.
You gotta bring, yeah, you gotta condition it upon it or bring it till we act on it or, or they wait till this, you know, private drive. Regulation.
Right, and then, I mean, I did want to caveat that it has yet to go to ordinance and somewhere it has to make its way through the boards. Planning, zoning, right, and then ultimately to the town board for approval. But we recognize that this is, this keeps continuing, this is a continuing issue that we have with lack of definitions for us to, to go on.
And Chris, I guess, I guess, I don't want to speak to the applicant, but I guess their point is they've got two hundred and twenty five feet on the private, the private driveway or the, therefore they, they have access to a access to an access.
Yes.
Oh, I, I don't disagree with the sentiment, I just don't think the proposal allows for what we're doing here.
Any other thing?
But let me, why don't you guys discuss something else other than approving or disapproving or granting a waiver? And let me do a little look in here.
You want some time to do some research?
Yeah, I, I would request that here.
Okay. Uh, any other board members? Well, I guess we should have done the order. Yeah, so, um, all right, well, let's hold this in abeyance for a couple minutes till our attorney responds and I'm gonna keep the hearing open. Can I have two hearings open at the same time?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so let's move on to, uh, sign, oh, the sign, okay, should be, this shouldn't take too much time.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we have an application. Still a hearing, uh, so open a hearing for CPN twenty-two oh sixteen from Frank Janeco owner of property at eighteen thirty state route three thirty-two requesting a special use permit, an S U P as we call it, uh, for a farm market building site. And I will open the hearing and you have our representing the applicant.
Oh yes, I'm just, I'm from Janeco.
Oh.
So yeah, we opened our farm market last year and it's been timeless and we're having a hard time finding, but I think it's about time, it's what it is.
And the name is?
Janeco Farm Market. There you go.
He gave me the customer's lot aside. Okay, and I guess the other rendering shows how, what it'll look like on the building. Will be nothing else, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, uh, I think our zoning officer, code enforcement officer has approved the size, the size, okay? So that's probably the biggest issue. Uh, is it lighted or unlighted or?
Oh, no, it's not.
Unlighted? Okay, so you can only see it in the daylight. And I knew, uh, Chris mentioned something about building numbers. But that's typically on freestanding signs, you know, if you have, the board say, if you have a freestanding sign, we put the building numbers for, uh, for emergency services. I don't think we normally put building numbers on or require them on buildings.
No, it chooses by the road, so it's property identification.
I'd certainly recommend that you have a, you know, you have the address somewhere clearly marked for emergency services. If necessary, but put that as a standalone, but it's something we're just suggesting not requiring.
Yeah, we're planning to put them on pillars up front, just vertically.
Okay. What were the pillars, pillars of the driving, of the farm, of the stands? Oh, okay, yeah, on the porch, okay. It's pretty simple. Any, uh, the board?
Yeah, no questions at all.
Okay, uh, anybody in the audience, any questions on this application for a special use permit to install a building sign? Okay, if not, uh, let's, uh, I'll close the hearing, we'll move ahead.
Mr. Chairman, just to point out, uh, as part of the special use permit processes, we in the past have done site plan with it, so I know as part of the draft, there was some dialogue on whether one was needed or not. I included it with you, uh, for it to nice dialogue. Um, you do have a concept, so, you know, site plan that we could go through if we needed to. Um, I don't know if that's what we want to do or not, but I know typically site plans are like a component of the special use permit.
I never understood why we inserted one where there's not even a site plan submitted.
It's tough because it doesn't technically meet your site plan.
Not this one.
You know, so usually we get a waiver from a special, for a site plan.
Or, yeah, or anything.
Right.
Uh, I would say we move in with the sign with the special use permit before we go the site plans.
I agree.
That would be my recommendation, which ends up favoring that.
Yeah.
Okay, but that being said, then I guess we're looking at a seeker type two to be considered for this application along with a special use permit, uh, to install the sign. I'll take it as a bundled uh, motion. Someone want to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion, uh, on a secret resolution, unlisted action, uh, for CPN dash two two dash zero one six Frank Connect. Janeco, next, owner of property eighteen thirty state road three three two, uh, seeking the especially used permit approval for the building sign. Seeker action with the, um, is there a site plan? No, so just, just, just special use.
Okay, so we got a motion on second place. Scott seconded, any further discussion? Not all in favor? Good luck.
Thank you.
When do you open up?
That's next Saturday.
Next Saturday? At some point I'll be there.
Right next day's hardware, it's like each hardware.
Everything you need, one set.
Alrighty, uh, next application is for another hearing. Chris, are you ready yet?
I think he's on the phone with Bob.
Oh, okay, yeah, uh, we will move on to the next hearing. Sorry Joel, keep you waiting. CPN twenty-two oh nineteen, uh, once again, Vennetti Associates representing, uh, Terry Gudkowski, owner of property set to be determined on Thomas Road, seeking a single state subdivision approval for the subdivision of, uh, twenty-six point five two six acres into two lots, one being seven point two three eight acres, the other being twenty-one point eight eight acres. So that you Rocco, I'll open the hearing.
It is. So this is kind of an internal thing for me, but we're, um, we want to subdivide this piece that I have a development agreement with Terry. I want to free up the seven acres and we're gonna add the twenty acres to a bigger subdivision that's gonna come along. So it's, like I said, it's kind of an internal thing. We do have the seven acres, we're gonna mark it. And we have a couple builders interested. It'll be a town home project, uh, and we're trying to work out the details on that now, but right now in order for me to move, what I need to subdivide this, I ended it two pieces and it certainly meets all the, you know, zoning. It's our one thirty and it's, you know, way above that. There's a gas line that goes through the middle of it as shown on the plan, but other than that, that's the only limiting factor. And like I said, eventually it'll be more than likely a town home project of some sort. But that's, that's not tonight. I mean, that's pretty much the, um, that's the overview, pretty, pretty straightforward.
Is lot two gonna be part of the town home or?
No, lot one is what we're proposing. Uh, lot two is gonna probably be green space for the bigger project that's gonna include the land to the south of there. So my holdings are about a hundred and twenty acres and a twenty acres is gonna be, you know, uh, combined with that stuff. And more than likely, a lot of that will be left, uh, perpetually, you know, green space to meet the forty percent green space that we need for for the bigger project down the road.
Okay. I'm trying to recall that concept plan or one of your concept plans you had for the, for the, uh, the whole, the whole block there. And I guess, yeah, that was, those would be townhouses, I guess, and apartment, and then, yeah, you had the green space. Uh, as long as you're coordinating that you're, you know, it'd be nice to maybe at some point to, uh, revisit your overall conceptual plan.
I know, I, I know that somewhere in the town that you guys have that, because I've submitted it a number of times, but I, I don't, I don't have it at the tip of my finger.
Oh, no, not now, but I'm saying now that you're cutting out pieces, you, you cut off the industrial lots, maybe it's time to see what you have left and what you're gonna do with it.
Not a problem.
So, I mean, because we're, we're subdividing off lots, just looking at, still in sort of piecemeal and, uh, you know, you, I guess you're doing a drug risk, but I certainly complies with the town requirements, but I guess you could always put the deeds back together if you had to, uh, but this is what you want to do now and I guess, uh, that being said, um,
Rocco, will it include also the thirty foot easement for us also?
Pardon me?
On Brickyard, will you still get the thirty yard, a thirty foot easement?
I, I don't have, I don't have that in the works. That was just on the other parcel to the south of here.
Well, that pretty much Brickyard is on the side that we may have that Auburn Trail on also, potentially.
I can add it if that's what you want me to do.
I have suggested being a condition that a thirty foot wide easement, just to keep it consistent with what you have to the south, Rocco, as a thirty foot wide easement to the town of Canadaigua, I just, I don't want to call it out specifically for the Auburn Trail yet, because I don't know if we need to.
It's not, it's not a problem, guys, I can do it.
Okay, anybody else in the board, any questions? Seekers, unlisted, uh, the county planning board had no, uh, no response. Uh, Chris Jensen had no comments, MRV had, you didn't have anything. Oh, we got nothing from city fire, county public works, nothing, county sewer district, nothing. We talked about the easement, talked about the intent of use of the properties, uh, anybody have anything else? Is anyone in the audience here virtually, uh, want to address this application? Okay, hearing none. I will close the hearing and we're ready to move on with a seeker action. This is unlisted, so let's do them one at a time. Uh, just make sure we're, you got our eyes that, uh, these crossed on the parts one. Uh, anybody see anything? What pings? Part two is enclosed and part three, uh, awesome. Okay, I, I'll make a motion that, uh, this board consider a resolution to consider this application a unlisted action under seeker and, uh, it meets, uh, the assessment, uh, as we've determined in this meeting and, uh, yes, that we approve.
I'll second.
Okay, an action, uh, motion second, anybody else? Anyone else on seeker, excuse me? If not, all in favor?
Hi.
Let's move on to the subdivisions.
I'll make a motion for the single state subdivision approval for twenty-two dash zero one nine with leave five, adding. Uh, adding the town easement language that we did on the last application.
One second, motion a second to approve single state subdivision for this applicant, all in favor?
I agree.
Pushing carries. Okay.
Thank you.
Good night folks.
Good night.
Chuck, I'm ready to discuss, uh, Timberwind.
Okay, I will officially reiterate the hearing, uh, for Timberwind. Go ahead, Chris.
From my understanding of the application, I do not, uh, advise the planning board to grant a waiver because I think it exceeds the authority granted to the planning board in article sixteen of New York State Town Law and chapter one seventy-four of the town code. Uh, I don't think that, I think you were gonna ask for the easements anyway, so I'd recommend that you continue this. Bring, uh, together more information and, uh, see if we can come up with some other way to work with this.
Okay, so you're recommending that, uh, we continue the hearing?
Yes, because you don't have authority to grant the waiver requested as part of this application and without such a waiver or variance, this lot, this proposal doesn't conform to, necessarily conform to the standards of fourth and town code.
Why, why continue it? Yeah, um, if, if we're never gonna have the right to issue the waiver, uh, why do we? Or it's not our prerogative?
Well, because I just got a chance to look at this tonight and maybe Shawna and Chris Jensen and, and I, along with the Anthony or Rocco can, can figure something else out to make this workable.
Is there a way that we could get a conditional approval based on Chris, the two Chris, Chris Nadler and Chris Jensen, understanding how to get through and if we can't come to an agreement, then we come back to the planning board, is that a possibility?
What do you think?
I'm just, I'm asking.
I, I would recommend we, we, I can't, Rocco, I can't. Rocco, I can't allow you to, to grant a waiver. And I don't think you can grant an approval tonight. We have, I just have spoke with Shawna on the phone. We're going to talk about this with Chris Johnson tomorrow morning. Um, and I apologize for the inconvenience. Um, but we gotta, we gotta apply the law equally for everybody. Um, I think we may be able to come to some sort of work and something out, but I'm not certain of that. So I would recommend, uh, continuing this to the next meeting.
Okay, I, I, well, it, either we put it out of its misery and deny the waiver and the subdivision. Or you're, or continue it, but if we're, if we're continuing something we don't have the right to authorize in the first place, uh, why continue it?
Well, because Chuck, I'm going to try and work with uh, the development department to see if they can come up with a different interpretation of, uh, lot frontage. I can't do that, you know, in the next twenty minutes.
Yeah, I know, I realize it. Okay.
Uh, really, I'd strongly encourage, you know, give it, give it one last chance. See if I can go through the code piece by piece and, and help come up with something different.
There, there, there must be some disconnect here just because, like I said, this was not something that that I came up with to do the waiver. It was, it was given to us by Chris Jensen to do it that way. So there's got to be something going on that is, I understand that it has to be uh, agreed upon, but, um, like I said, this was not something that Joel and I came up with on our own. We were, we were given this waiver and the how to go about it by the town of Kandig with development office.
Exactly, Anthony. And, you know, is it possible that I'm missing something that Chris Jensen saw? It is possible, which is why I'd say don't, as, as Chuck said, put it out of its misery. Maybe there's something I, I'm not miss, I'm not seeing here. Um, but based on the information I've got right here, I would recommend continuing it.
Okay, could, uh, that, that occur in the next two weeks?
Absolutely.
So that, uh, uh, the applicant could be on the agenda for May tenth?
Yeah, absolutely. We can work this out.
Okay. All right. Joel, do you understand what we're saying here? Okay, I, I think hopefully something can be worked out.
Unfortunately, my, my homeowners, you know, obviously wanted to take advantage of the
He wants to buy it.
Interest rate.
He wants to buy an hour.
We've been. I know, it takes time and I understand and respect all that.
Okay, well, we will, uh, we will continue. I was willing to keep this on our agenda.
I would, I would say though, if you come back again, make sure you have an agreement with all of this property.
Keep working on that.
The easement that I already have or the shortness of.
All.
Okay, that's.
It would be like, uh, if it's been filed, then I'll have a library page, right?
I've already had coverage for seven years, so I have that easement. Sure.
Okay, uh, so I need a motion to continue to the May tenth hearing. I need.
That's done. Second.
Yeah, motion second, continue, uh, this hearing until May tenth, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Okay, we'll see you, uh, on the tenth. Thanks.
Thank you.
Alrighty. We move on to new site plans and the gentleman remaining here. Uh, we're looking at CPN twenty-two oh twenty-one, Mark Six Engineering representing Pro Cutters. And escapee owners of property, and they yet to determine address on county route, well, at county route ten and county route forty-six. Yes, the address will be on forty-six.
Yes.
So, uh, it's requesting a single-stage site plan approval for the development of a landscape contracting and landscape supply facility. Okay, Logan, you're representing the applicant?
Yep, I'm Logan Rockcastle, Mark, Mark's Engineering, and going to go through the site plan a little bit, fifty-two hundred square foot building. We have, uh, added play parking, store, um, as well as, uh, trailer parking, so, uh, elongated parking areas. Um, they are looking to expand a little bit from their current operation to facilitate more employees. So hopefully this, uh, new building will help build their business. They're also proposing, uh, landscape bunkers for, uh, supply of gravel. Stone for their landscape projects, mulch. They also have a firewood business along with their landscaping, so that's kind of like the bigger bunker um, north of the smaller ones. And then there's, um, another bunker to the very north that's going to eat like more of like compost and refs, refuse from their basically organic matter from their, uh, landscape business, uh, that they can reuse in their projects. Um, we've also proposed a pad for, um, shipping container, which will be used for, um, seasonal storage. Um, because they want to keep their, their barn clean and they're not going to be using all of their equipment all at once. So they want to have a place that can facilitate that. The way this is designed is to facilitate, uh, fire access and turnaround, uh, by the new building and up, uh, by uh, storage bunkers. Um, we do have a stormwater management facility proposed on the site. Uh, we're in the process of reworking that based on Lance's comments that we got last week. Um, so there will be summary visions to this plan based on stormwater um, and, um, water connection. As far as anything else goes, it's. Do you have any questions on the site plan? Oh, we, we also have posed a septic system that will be hooked up to the to the building, to break that system.
How far along are you with the septic?
Uh, we're waiting for site plan approval before we submit to, uh, Tyler.
Yeah.
Or to.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess he sort of, he doesn't want to start looking for things.
No.
Okay, well, that would seem to be a condition.
Yeah. So, uh, we're looking for conditional site plan approval based on a couple different things that we're working on right now.
Okay, site board?
I'm strictly going to be doing the exact same thing. You're a real Cheshire, right?
Uh, we were, uh, we had to leave that location. We're now at an intermittent, uh, location out on five and twenty Bloomfield. The old, uh, true value hardware, uh, location out there. And so, um, we purchased, we've actually been involved in this for the last three years. And when the property was for sale originally, it included our eleven acres, but it also included the solar farm that's right next to us, as well as a home that's on the corner of ten and forty-six. And, uh, that was by Mr. Westbrook. Um, they, as you know, you approved it, you subdivided it off. And so now, um, we had purchased this, uh, with this intent in mind. And I was kind of hoping that it was going to, it was my first time doing this, so I was hoping it was going to move faster than it has. So we're in an intermittent location right now on five and twenty. Waiting to build our shop here and move our home to here.
Okay, so it's all you guys, no retail sales or anything like that?
No, at this point in time, it's just us.
No public use at all?
Yeah, no public use. Uh, it's just going to be for us.
I went out there and looked at it. It's pretty wet. How wet is it way back there?
Um, it varies. Uh, they've done a elevation and stormwater management plan, but it varies. Um, the, the location itself seems to be relatively flat and. Well, what you're seeing along the road is there is a floodplain.
Yeah.
The right of way, um, it, there was, uh, preparation by, uh, Army Corps of Engineers that cited some wetlands, but they're too small to restrict any development.
Those are my questions.
In Lance's letter, he had asked this as well, or sought somewhere else. Um, the building, you'll have septic, the water will electric be hooked up as well?
Yes, yep. We'll show that on the utility plan there is.
Okay.
The orange line, I don't know if you can see that on the next slide.
I think it was your, your statement of operations.
Right, because it's kind of going slow because he wants to get his bunkers and store it running first. So it's not the first thing he's going to be putting into the electric. Right, so the building is there and we're going to hook up electric because we're we're trying to make it so when we're doing the development, we're not going over five acres at one time.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I totally understand. I think I just wanted to make sure where the.
So the public would have no reason to come onto your property for anything. They're, they're not there to pick any mulch up or anything. It's all strictly for your.
No, we, in our letter of operations, there we, we clearly read that.
I want to make sure.
No one, um, Chris Jensen did brought that out and we're fully understanding of that. And, uh, it's known that if we do in the future want to make anything, uh, retail there, that we would have to get it rezoned for that purpose. And like I say, right now, we're looking for a home for us, for our employees, for our equipment. Um, and, and there would be no retail sales. I read at some point, how many employees do you have now? Right now, we have fourteen.
All your loading equipment. It's going to be stored back there.
Uh, loading equipment such as like a skid steer.
Whatever equipment you have that is needed for your operation.
Yep, most of it will be inside of our shop, okay? Um, we really try not to leave anything outside for safety reasons. Um, the equipment that would be outside would be trucks or trailers. Other than that, uh, everything would be inside under lock and key. Uh, super valuable. We have a lot of money invested in our equipment. Nothing's going to be left outside. And it kind of brings me to the next point. I want to make it really clear to everyone that this site, my vision for it is to really kind of show what we do. I want this site to be a showcase. I don't want people to drive by and, and I think that's kind of what you're alluding to. Is there going to be stuff parked everywhere? Is there going to be a menagerie of stuff? I want green grass. I have a plan to put in nice flowering crab trees. We're going to have mulched areas. Um, I'm going to exceed all their expectations for green space, trust me, because that's what I give. And I want that to be a showcase. We've already, if you've driven by, we've already started cleaning up that frontage. We have about a thousand foot on forty-six. We've already gone through there and made two sweeps and two different layers of garbage. There were tires that were in the, I mean, we, we've, and we've started cutting it and cleaning it. And so that's only going to improve more and more. So I want it to be really well-known that we want to take care of this. We want this to be a showcase and a reflection of what we do. Uh, we take pride in what we do. I think a lot of us, a lot of people here have seen our work and that's going to show what we do.
You're, you're Mr. Sorry?
Yes.
I just want to make sure our, our.
This is my son Alex, by the way. He is also owner in the company.
Uh, he said you want to make it a showcase. I, I think your landscape plan shows a couple dogwood across the front and that's it.
Well, I talked to Logan about crab apple trees.
Crab apples.
Yep, yeah. Well, we want to make sure we're not totally screening the interior, but make it look peeling when you're driving by. Yes.
Okay, and you think ten crab apples?
We're going to do more than that. Well, I mean, it will, what he's talking about is, you know, nice striped grass underneath like that. Sort of that curb appeal.
Yeah, okay, I mean, you guys did a great job on Little Cheshire in front of the, uh, full of the fire trucks. I say, man.
Oh, yeah.
KH's own property.
Yeah. I'd expect very least your own property.
Yeah, yes.
That was right down from where you.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right across street.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I, I would appreciate it. You know, it's tough to acquire it in the industrial, but I, I would think that you if you want to make a showcase, if you want to, you know, embellish, uh,
Yes.
more shrubs and, uh, trees. Um, okay, we, we saw a, you know, you have a pole war, or not pole war, but a rigid frame building you're putting up. You have the elevation of that.
Yes.
All good. The, uh, class C stream, it's, it's got a floodplain, it's got fragments associated with it, I guess. Uh, has all precautions been taken in terms of?
Something that we need to talk with Chris and, um, so, Lance, um, and kind of meet that up because under our interpretation, it's phase five.
Uh, strange stream. It's not a class C.
So that's something we need to talk with Lance and.
I would say whatever correspondence you can provide and document that.
Yeah.
You know, I'm, we're basing an awful maps and but information that.
But that's, we're designing our stormwater based on that criteria. So we needed, either way, but we get a determination on that, that's how we're designing our stormwater facility.
They have the new FEMA maps too, I guess Chris will.
I don't, I don't believe the determination from Chris, I think that's.
I think Chris just pointed out that the new.
Yeah, I think, I think you're going to have to have some correspondence from the Corps.
Sure.
Or D E C as to whether or not they classify it now.
Exactly.
Will you need hope? Core and D E C.
Well, D E C will probably deter, affect the Army Corps for the repairing.
So how's all this, we've been talking about covered in terms of that improvement? Is it in your letter or is it?
Yeah, it's in my letter.
Okay.
That they need to correspond with the, I mean, I can't approve the stormwater as it is without some level of compliance from the Corps. And their design would change, but ultimately what I, what I can say is that everything that's been provided to us as it is today, assuming the Corps comes back with no issues with what they're proposing, I don't have an issue with the stormwater. Obviously, we're working through the technical aspects of all, but they're designing to be fully compliant with the D E C and town's requirements. It's just as it stands right now, the one piece in order for us to sign off on it is the correspondence from the Corps as it relates to this repairing, but, you know, stream, which we've dealt with on other projects along this.
Okay. So make sure we got it covered.
Do you have, uh, well, I don't think I've said it to you.
I don't, I couldn't find it. I think so, I mean.
I mean, it, it's a hot issue on this property because county planning board brought it up, Chris brought it up. You brought it up and I just want to make sure that. And, and I guess that cover, the pipe under the driveway, it sounded like a twelve-inch pipe, I mean, I, you know, I think.
Yeah. Well, that's part of our, our best design work is we're, we're working through that based on.
Okay.
Based on what we classify this floodplain slash stream is, I mean, because that, that.
When you're floodplain, what, and all that, you, you don't associate a twelve-inch pipe as being.
Right. That's one of the, the items that we've had, we highlighted as a potential.
So that pipe could change.
And the discharge of the facility. You know, I, I know, it, what, what happened is, is that everything that they're proposing to discharge would have to be further back to, in, in retained more. If that is a back of glassy stream, that's called.
Yeah, and then that's the main dictating factors, whether it's a class C or a.
Okay. Will there be signage?
Yes.
Lit?
Um, I don't have plans on lighting it, and I believe Logan located the sign on the.
Yep, it's on the site.
Now we've, of course, have a permit from.
For lighting, right?
And would it say anything like private or anything like that? So uh, somebody would come drive by, they're like, hey, look at that mulch, let me go find some.
Um, I don't have plans on having, I just, pretty much our, our logo, um, uh, that we have on the side of our trucks. Um, that's all I really plan on having there, uh, unless the board tells me I need something else, um. Uh, I don't, I think it just, our logo.
There's no gate?
I, I don't have a gate, I don't have a gate, uh, plans, no, no. If we did want to put a gate in, does that require a special permit or how does that work?
Just a, I would say a transfer, really.
Probably, yeah, they'll, they'll determine probably because they're going to look at stacking too. Like if you have a gate, you could stack it on the road. So if you're going to put a, a gate up, I guess my thought would be. So if you're gonna put a gate up, I guess my thought would be, it seemed to make more sense back at this location, then stacking won't be an issue. Fire apparatus can get in.
Right.
No problems, but it worked through town code forces to figure that out.
I don't have plans to do a gate, so just thought I'd ask.
I, I don't believe there's any required, I was just.
Have you been, does the county public works regarding the driveway permit? Oh, yeah.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Although we're still going through like how it's gonna be.
For its location with.
Yeah, right. I mean, well, we have, we have, are they, they're under consideration with the detailing.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would be.
Yeah, I mean, we, I had already started compiling the details to show what it's going to be, um, sort of the plans.
Steve, I think you mentioned your operations lighting, uh, the lighting, uh, we're gonna have lighting on the building, any poles?
Um, initially, uh, if we were to do any lighting, Logan's explained to me that it has to be the dark sky compliant.
Yeah.
But, uh, right off the bat, uh, I don't think that we're gonna be doing any lighting at all. I don't think that, uh, that's a necessary thing, we're trying to get everything up and going and do it for as affordable as possible right now.
What I would suggest is, well, it was in our come out letter and it was brought up, I know with code, is that I don't believe any lighting is required other than building lighting for fire code and safety protocol. I would suggest that your plans at least show those lights.
I, I do have a plan in place, um, and it'll be.
Photometrics.
Yep.
Yeah, the photometrics are probably minimal, if it's just building, I'm not wholly concerned with.
It's basically just going around the building.
Right.
Over all the doors and things of that nature.
Where I was going with is that i- if you do decide it won't, like you want lighting, you're gonna be coming back to these guys in order to do.
We should just have it in place, yeah, and I already have it done, so.
Perfect, perfect.
Hey Logan, I have another question, after looking at a picture here, it looks like there's a drain spill coming off of the solar panel array break through where you want to plant, right in the middle of the solar glands or solar.
I'm not aware of that.
It looks like there's a ditch that runs.
Well, we're going to be raising up.
I know, so you raise it up and then the water stays on the solar, uh, and that's a problem.
Right, well, I mean, if it's draining onto our property, which I don't know anything about, we're gonna have to, to deal with it.
So we'll be across covert underneath the driveway.
That's what I'm saying, and that would have to be, because if this.
Yeah, I will, yeah, yeah. Just, um, just to give you a little light on that, are you referring to the, uh, west side of the solar farm that goes along our bunkers?
Yeah.
Okay, um, in that area, I think the one I toured it last, it appears that just during construction of the solar farm, it was just move soil around. And I think there were a few little areas in there that maybe just were kind of like puddling type of thing. It's not really truly a.
Stream of it.
Yeah, yeah.
I would say it was a stream, I would say it was a swale.
Yeah.
That may funnel water out for there.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's something we'll have to consider during site construction because it's not really apparent on any of our plans, I mean, and it should not be draining onto this property.
Okay, uh, any other questions on the board? E C B was concerned about chemicals, oils. You have no, I guess you'll be changing mower fluids in the building, the.
That would be it, um, all of our vehicles, uh, get serviced at Master Tyg Auto and five and twenty, and it would be enough money to choke a horse if you saw what my repair bills are, we don't do any, our own work on that. The only we do would be maybe, uh, mowers, uh, and it's very low.
Do you do winter maintenance at all, solding or?
We do, yes.
Where do you store your salt in bags?
Yes.
On pallets? In the building probably or?
Yes, sir.
And plows, what do you store the plows in the building or outside the building?
Inside.
You have a lot of parking places, I guess, they clearly exceed the requirements. And, and the reason you need all those.
So we have fourteen employees, as we stated.
Yeah.
Uh, we have currently eight trucks, we have ten trailers. Um, and we are growing, and if I could hire five more people right now, I would hire them as well, you know, most businesses are in that same situation right now. So when I asked Logan, uh, to design this, I said, let's make sure we have enough room for existing, but let's take into consideration growth as well, because I wanted to make sure that I came to you with what our vision is for even a couple of years down the road. Our trucks are gonna be growing, our fleet's gonna be growing, and our employee parking is gonna grow.
And your lot for the most part is for driveway and parking areas, it's gravel, right?
Yes.
Gravel, so you really wouldn't be able to delineate the parking spaces.
Gravel. No, I have seen some pretty unique, uh, where they've actually sprayed lines on gravel and, and you wouldn't think that it stays that long, but I've actually seen where it has. It might be something that might need to be done annually, uh, I'm not sure, but we could explore doing that.
How's the board feel about having the? I would say it's not public, not public. It's all, it's just to confirm they have adequate number of workers. And more than enough, okay.
Does your staff getting caught in that in winter, how, what, what's the?
It, it does, yeah, we, we do have decline in the winter, we might go from fourteen down to maybe nine or eight.
As your driveway out at, depending what the county wants, so probably you have to be some sort of paid driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the categories, yeah, the forty-six. All right. Beat this enough? Make sure Jensen talked about the FEMA maps, county plane board is concerned about FEMA maps, class C streams, the E C B was chemical oils. I guess quoted like Steve said, it's gonna be a showcase.
Yes, sir.
Okay, M R B, we talked about the city fire, we did not get a response from fire department, uh, county public works, uh, no response, but you'll have to.
Oh, yeah.
Talk to them. Uh, I know we got it from Sue regarding the separate, well.
Yeah.
FEMA. Very.
Yeah, it was twelve.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, C four eight. Yeah, county plane board is A four eight and. D W was twelve, yeah, okay. So at the record show, we did get a response from the county planning, county public works department, one with the county planning board. No response from D O H, and Jim Fletcher had some comments about the work.
Yeah, and we're realigning that, so don't have an onsite hydrant.
That's right, you're, you're gonna place it.
Yeah, but we don't wanna do a backflow.
So you're not gonna.
No, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an extension on, on forty-six there.
All right. Okay, so we're ready to move?
Ready, okay.
Surely.
The location of the site again? Okay.
It's on the site plan, not the utility, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, let's take the secret separate from the site plan. It's an unlisted action under secret, we have a part one that's still good. Logan, his firm. All questions answered. And part two and part three. And by M R B, so I have a motion regarding the secret. I'll make that motion, secret resolution as an unlisted action that's twenty-nine seventy, county road ten, C P N two-two-zero-two-one for approval. I'll second. Motion second, uh, before we take a vote, I should take a last call, anybody had any comments from the public from this application, I don't think there's anybody left. That's why I sort of skipped over, but at least gave them a chance. Okay, I have motion a second regarding secret, all favor. If someone wants to, uh, give me a motion on the site.
If I may, before you.
Yeah, I'm gonna say you wanna do the condition first then.
I can read through all the conditions or I can read through the ones that I added since you guys seen them, it's your call.
What you have.
Add, oh, the ones I added, okay. They're, all the conditions are standard in terms of comments from code enforcement officer, highway waters, lieutenant, town engineer, D O H approval of the subject, those are your standard approvals. I added, uh, based on conversation with the code enforcement officer, condition number eight, which states the following note shall be added to the plans. I think you have some of this referenced in your statement of operations, and also maybe one of the notes in the plans, but I'm, I'm suggesting a condition just to make sure.
Sure.
The only, the only use approved for the site is a contractor storage as permitted within industrial district. There's some concern with some of the potential options that you may have, it's understood that you have no intention of doing anything other than what was described to the board tonight. That use is identified as a contracted storage, so we're just asking that that note be added to the plans. Well, number two, under that, a note is that no retail sales shall take place on site without first receiving an approval of the use from the town of Gandaigua. That was the verbiage that I got from the code enforcement officer, I think that's accurate, but that's the suggestion.
Go ahead, read number three.
And then number three, there will be no motor vehicle storage, no repairs, and no storage of tires on site. When we say motor vehicle storage, I'm not anticipating we're talking about storage of trucks or supplies associated with what was defined tonight. I think this is, uh, abandoned vehicles of some sort that are becoming an outdoor storage area that would exceed what has been approved for this project.
I would, I would condition as to say that it would be non serviceable.
I think that's defined in the town code.
Is that, all right, I can.
Can we take a quick look here?
None.
Because motor vehicles.
I know, well, I wrote it down and I, I was kind of concerned with how it may be interpreted.
Uh, and that would include no repairs of the motor vehicles.
No repairs.
Mower.
Yeah, no repairs of, of, yeah.
No storage of tires.
No storage of tires.
Are you gonna be chipping your firewood like did it on Little Cheshire?
We split it, yeah, so.
So our logs come in in log length, right, very likes, and we cut them down to sixteen inch pieces.
Yeah.
And then we split them, we process everything.
I would say no.
We'll be able to put them out front, sell them.
No, no. No.
And where will that occur, back in the storage area?
Yes, sir, Logan pointed out the largest bin in the rear.
Far, the north.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's all the delivery.
Correct, yep, yep.
We do a lot of firewood bundles to gas stations and convenience stores, and then we also have a heck of a lot of.
Home, home order.
Yeah, yep.
Continue.
Yeah, that one condition where we're defining motor vehicles as non serviceable, and then no repairs will be of those non serviceable motor vehicles allowed on site. And then the storage of tires on site, we say no storage of tires, but we're suggesting no outside storage of tires on site. I guess you could technically have tires in the building, which would be.
And in fairness, we do have spare, brand new mower tires, because we do puncture them often, but I understand what you're saying.
I believe the intent of this statement that was provided to me was the outside storage concept.
Yes, sir.
Um, and then nine was added, which is just further discussion on a lighting plan to be updated and provided, just making sure that the lighting is shown for the building that's, that's required, and then if there is any outdoor storage of light or additional lights that are being suggested, now would be the time to.
Yeah, yeah, we can all have that conversation with Steve before we submit.
You can say future light for all of them, but at least then it's approved and it's dealt with.
We're left on that.
Right, for lights.
Yeah.
Lights. Those are the two additional ones that were added since this was.
They, the phosphorus.
Phosphorus notes, those, those notes are still on, are still required to be shown.
Right.
Okay, all right, so we have, uh, a suggested resolution for the site plan that I have a motion.
Yes, I'll make that motion for the site plan approval for twenty-two dash year two one. The conditions of ten in total and the updates as discussed just now.
The latest plan is still March first, that was the, you haven't.
No, we're waiting for college.
Okay, all favor.
Hi.
Okay, good luck, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are you Terry?
I'm Steve.
Steve, okay. Sorry. I haven't signed any. Everything.
Really?
Okay. Hi, guys.
Was it?
No, no. All right, uh.
I've never had that happen before.
Yeah, I'm still.
Okay.
Okay, we have some minutes from our last meeting, for fault, wanna make a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of the fault.
Thank you, Scott, second.
Second.
Second law. Very good job, as usual, John.
I thought it was.
See beauty great. Okay, all favor.
Hi.
Okay, we have a letter credit release from Mark, not Juzy Nate, did you use your name? The forty-five, twenty-nine, Little Cheshire, uh, requesting security release.
Yeah, I, I staple these usually to go, just to.
There you go, yeah.
And I believe it's the third one.
Four hundred and sixty-one.
Your ledger pay is, is four hundred and fifty-one dollars, but it's single and only release, so, and it also leaves final. So.
Nate, I'll make the motion to give Mark back his four hundred.
One second.
All fair.
Hi.
All right.
Post. Back in the line. Okay, uh, no referrals from town board yet?
Yeah.
Not yet, uh, recommendations from, uh, recommendations, E V A, nothing, shake them up on. Recommendations from, uh, Chris. Come plan, uh, let's see, I know Bob's still generally working on the solar.
All over again, yeah.
Those of you who attended the training session and, and listened to Dave Lance's presentation, it, there's a lot to this.
I brought copies, it's gonna be one of the hard copy of solar, please, thank you.
But things are changing on the solar front. And, uh,
I already heard his name.
So Bob is going to. And, and at some point, you're gonna probably go to an I D two and.
Yep.
Get front of them. Go to Bob and say, what happens, what do you guys?
Yeah, I mean, it has changed my thought process a lot, so, yeah.
Okay.
Can you rewrite the whole thing?
I'll do things on five G and, uh, we'll do five G.
Five G, I'm excited.
I can tell.
Sorry. Finally got a local Horizon rep from Henrietta that would love to address any portion of whoever would like to listen during the day, during the week. Because he has to put together a presentation, so I told him I would be back, and if I have a small group, I will take time off, it's gonna be like a Zoom.
What if we recorded the Zoom and then show it, if we thought it was worthwhile?
So I'll go ahead and say, you know.
If you wanna set it up with me, then I'll be on it, I'll, we'll do it via the town soon.
Okay.
We can record it.
And he's local, that was, because trust me, I, you know, this channel, and it's commercial, and then, but they have a municipality department. And he's local. That was because, trust me, you know, this channel, it's commercial and then, but they have a municipality department, believe it or not. So it's not commercial.
Government, like the government affairs.
Yes. All right, so I will slip that.
I also had some other presentations, anyways, interesting from Friday. The natural resources from Mabella. And they had two parts. They had the N R I inventory, what to look for, and then they had kind of a summary of all of our plans. Also, MRB has given us a cute little.
Oh.
Hey, it's like, you know, we want to check our plan out.
Yeah, it's actually, they're nice to have.
Why don't you do a jury? Ten scales and twenty scales, right?
That's what I use.
That would be way better.
I don't have the control of the marketing.
Yeah. I need to get their act together is what you're saying.
Yeah, don't use, those are not usable, but you can put a line, draw a straight line.
They're not usable.
They're not usable.
No.
All right, anybody else do any reports on the. On our projects? I, I can say that Lance and I and Jim Fletcher are going to get together in May. The reasons is the design criteria, back standards.
Can you include me in that meeting?
Aye.
Please.
All the engineer.
I'm not an engineer.
We'll make you.
Thing is a little.
If you remember, my task was, you know, the actual item regarding making sure that our design criteria standards do not hinder pedestrian and bicycling in road designs. And I think we're, we're not only going to look at that, we're just going to go back to the whole annual preserve or some update that we have to do. Similar to the solar origins, I guess, is a total look at. So Lance will get to go to the gym sometime.
Okay, that's going good. I'm ready.
All right, we've got some extension. Three requests.
And DeMarco.
We've got two.
Jim, two genecos, Colby and Ray.
One's the second, check the one's the first.
So we've got. Osteik. Osteik is requesting a second extension.
Right, there's no.
No reason?
There's no reason other than they're working to address conditions.
They requested it from the development office.
August.
All righty.
Oh, this is our second.
This is second, so it'll be their last. So just make sure they're aware of that. If we extend it, would someone make a motion to grant the extension?
So moved.
Bob, a second?
One second.
Scott, second? For discussion. All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the other is from.
Schwartz.
Yes, Kristen and Caitlin Schwartz. Two eighty seven Irish seven. So first extension request.
I've been working fairly closely with Mr. Schwartz in trying to get his engineer to get the final plans on.
Okay.
So hopefully that will be in the next. But in the meantime.
What's, what's hanging them up?
Drywall calculations need to be figured out.
Engineer's dragon.
The engineers dragon.
Okay. All righty, well, during this engineer.
Right, so he, this last extension or well, I think it's the first and last.
Okay, so someone want to make a motion regarding Mr. Schwartz. This, this one?
His two daughters, I believe.
Okay.
I move to extend one extension every ninety day.
Okay.
A second.
Okay. Scott motion, I'm having a second is all favor. Okay. Do you look at her head? Yeah. Uh, is Mr. Thornton, Thornton Engineering, ready to come back with the new improved plan?
He says yes, a couple of weeks ago, so.
So he's on the agenda for May tenth?
Yep.
Or May eighth?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a, it's a sketch plan. They have a new.
Market there? Yes.
Okay, so they.
Which is key.
They, I guess, changed, changed.
This company kind of brought.
A co.
Rivers, yeah.
Okay, then marks engineering for a. Uh, let's, you know, contractors that do our, who are on Sunset Ridge.
A T L contract, I don't like that. That's not right. That's not right. Let me, it's A T L is. Our friends, but that they're not, it's a different LLC. Yeah, let me change that.
That's Sunset Ridge.
Yep, so Sunset Ridge is twenty two twelve. Right, they just submitted new plans Monday revised to what was received. Yeah.
So the, the intent to declare expired.
Expired.
Table fifteen.
Correct, so your thirty days would be up. So you would be in a position where you could declare yourselves lead agency. And then you have twenty days to make a determination of certificates on that set of action once you declare or mutually agree to extend it to continue to provide whatever information that you guys feel you may be missing.
Okay. So there are new plans, which we definitely will want to see.
I don't have them either.
I, you.
I didn't get them. We have them.
Cause that's what I.
Michelle has them, yeah.
They sent them to Michelle and to me, but then I forwarded to you.
Yeah, so we will get them uploaded ASAP.
Okay, so I guess no further discussion since it's really on the agenda tonight. Then an application that may look familiar to some of us, marks engineering representing Wayne Metros. From this morning. Two of us, three, Amanda. Okay, so Mr. Metros is back essentially saying.
Absolutely the same application, it just expired, yes.
Hopefully he's met the conditions that he didn't meet before it started.
I'm hoping they show a letter that says he has met the condition, but it might be the same letter I issued before him, which says the following conditions are still pending.
I think. It's the conservation use of that language.
Yep.
Right, which is not Nadler's responsibility to draft. It's provided to us and we give it the A okay, but we don't have a grasp of that language.
Okay, then we got minor communities.
Oh, yes, another form based code.
Another sketch plan for form based codes. They're heating up. And then we have a continuation of Timberland. Okay. And briefly, twenty fourth, we teach kids. Are the exercise back with another bar, animal barn?
Just I don't.
He's got to go to Z B A, so pending the Z B A approval, see that or not, and then we rest.
Just because it got brought up today, that Craig Westbrook one.
I told Lance in the hall, yeah, so our interpretation for Westbrook is the same as it was for Timberland. So I'm going to talk to Nadler about that, Chris, about that tomorrow as well.
You can call me Nadler, that's fine.
We call you Nadler in the office all the time, so.
My whole life, it just, it just happens.
Yeah, we call Nadler all the time.
I don't know what the solution is, but, but Shawna, Chris and I will talk tomorrow and figure out something to do with these because they come up a lot recently.
Yep.
And the zoning board isn't interested in granting these flag lots.
Right.
Right.
We have the red line version of this for ordinance on Monday, so it is going to start working its way through.
Okay, just give us some guidance.
Oh, yeah, I think hopefully you guys will have the answer because either hey, there's no point in them coming in, so we're great person.
Okay, just to clean things up, there are a couple of applications that are out hanging either because they're incomplete. Simon Rockwell was one, three thirty two. These came before P R C and I guess they haven't made it to the plane board agenda yet. Fifty fifty one, county rate sixteen, CPN.
Well, some may, is that wiser? That are wiser, there's one for a, wiser for a shed, which is really a giant shed.
Okay, and then fifty two seventy two, that was the stream setback.
That is shotlins.
Shotlins, right.
Yeah, that is. In flux.
And what?
The similar private driveway.
Yeah, driveway, front edge.
Okay. Okay, I, I don't want to spend too much time on applications we're having to sign. Here, under the guidance of Nadler.
Nadler.
Nadler told us not to talk about. So with that being said, anybody else have anything to do with the board? The, the training was very worthwhile.
It was excellent. Thank you. Thank you for putting everyone together.
Presenters.
Thank you.
And you will give us proper credits.
You will all get credit where credit is due.
Who, who is now tracking? The training hours.
Kelly.
Kelly.
Kelly weed. So Michelle is officially moved over to real property. Doesn't mean I don't go talk to her and ask her questions, but she has a new position. So Kelly is now working. Allison is filling in, but enjoying, she's more permitting, Kelly is more permitting.
Okay, so that's Kelly and Allen.
Yes, Ally's permits.
CEO.
Yep, yeah.
So if I wanted to find out what's left for me for training. Kelly.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We will, we, our goal this week is to update and let everybody know, especially people who aren't in our municipality. We've had a few people asking about credit, so we'll get into that this week.
Michelle, you're telling, Kelly will do a spreadsheet that has all the training hours that you've done. So you can track where you stand and how you're scoring and all that. So we don't get caught at the end. But the, that was, is that D hours?
Right, it was just like an hour.
Well, if you're there the whole, I mean, if you stayed the whole time. In fact, I didn't leave my seat, I sat in the seat. Tom Schwartz, everybody kept coming to me.
Yeah, you moved, you didn't move all day, basically.
In fact, I missed the one base. Move things around. All right, anything else? All right, give me a, give me a goodbye, Amanda.
I'll make a motion to adjourn this evening at seven forty three P M. Thank you all.
Thank you. All fair.
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.